Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Barnioli, here. Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Ogier?
Here.
Mr. Zelinski?
Present.
Mr. Vadenay?
Here. Next time is the open forum pursuant to public law forty-two dash forty-six dash six D with a maximum of fifteen minutes. Is there anyone out there wishing to speak under the open forum? If you are, please put up your raise your hand on your Zoom screen or somehow get the attention of the clerk and we'll shall identify you and.
The chat function is disabled, so they can't raise their hand.
Oh, they can't?
But they can open their camera and do this.
Okay.
There we go.
Is there anyone wishing to speak under the open forum?
Oh, Mike Clifford raised his hand. So I guess you can.
Yeah, I can't. I can't see that, but that's okay. Is there?
Clifford raised his hand. Nope, seems to be the only one.
Mr. Clifford? Can unmute him?
I did unmute myself. Am I unmuted?
You are.
Yes, you are, Mr. Clifford.
Thank you. I want to speak to the item on the agenda regarding the hiring of another consultant architectural firm to review the Bushy, the Bushy project, the police station, and you had two options, one to come up with the cost for a new station and the other for the cost calculation of renovating the current station. And I I mentioned it before at another meeting that to date you've spent about a half a million dollars on three different architects. You had RGB, you had Studio Major, and you had Secoshia. And they all developed sets of plans identical for both projects for Bushy and for Kendall Dean. And neither, none of them have ever said there was a problem with the building being a limited lifespan or any of that other the other comments that have been made. I attended the February meeting of the MBITF and in February they all heard, I heard the meeting quite distinctly and and the Mr. Chamberlain in particular commented that they had lots of information available from the three previous bids. From the, from the previous bids in two thousand sixteen and I think there were four or five and they were broken down by category sixteen categories, divisions, and you had the bids from Secoshia. So they, they clearly said they had enough information and didn't need an architect to help at this point. And I think it's a waste of money to yet again hire another architect and have him, you know, I don't know, come up with the cost estimates that I think anybody with the information and data that the MBITF has from the other bids that have already gone out for identical work can come up with the number if they just sit with an estimator for an hour or so. I don't think it's, it's a monumental task or, and I think it's a waste of money. You know, I saw something about the building safe. Well, I don't think the three previous architects had in mind an unsafe building that didn't meet the standards. So I just, that's my commentary. I repeated, I said, made the same comment several months ago and I just wanted to get them on there tonight for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Is there anyone else, Ms. Scott?
I'm double checking now, but I don't see anybody. Nope, everyone's cameras off and there's no hands raised.
Mr. Clifford was able to show you that he raised his hand though? He physically raised his hand.
No, he showed me on the Zoom that he raised his hand. I didn't, I wasn't sure with the chat option gone, if that was still possible, but it is.
But it is.
I think it'd be nice if you explained how to, how you do do that because I had a hard time finding it tonight. It's something maybe you could say at the beginning of every meeting. Hit the chat tab and then it pops up and then there is the option there, but to find it as a new person, it'd be a struggle.
Okay. Like I said, I didn't even know the option was available because the chat's disabled, so.
Can I ask one other question, Paul?
You go ahead.
Will you, you were at the February meeting and we, did I misrepresent what they were saying at that meeting? Didn't everybody agree that you had plenty of data and you didn't need another architect? And didn't everybody agree that you had the bid specs and you could calculate the cost?
Just so, just so that you're clear, Mike, it's not the MBITF that is requesting this RFP, the RFQP. It's the town council that's requesting it. We made an, we made a, a presentation to the council on, on what we felt and we were looking for input from the council and the council decided to go looking for an RFQP. It's not coming from the MBITF. We, we drafted it for them, but it's not, it's not what we recommended that they do.
Right.
Clear.
And I just wanted to make that clear as well. What I said was accurate. That was the field of the MBITF, but the council was doing something different.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak under the open forum? Nobody, Lou?
Nope.
Okay, moving on.
Mr. President, Mr. President, may I, because it comes further on into the minutes, which I wanted to discuss this. If you don't mind, just give it an extra five minutes in case people are out there that are not adept at wishing to speak. Can we give it an extra five minutes?
Well, right now we have attorneys sitting there that we're paying.
I understand, but we could have, we could have people that wish to speak, so. If we could just give it five more minutes, Mr. President, I'd appreciate that. I'm sure people maybe try, maybe they are, maybe they're not. I certainly would like to make sure that anybody has the opportunity to speak. They do, because there is a lot over here. For your consideration, Mr. President.
We'll wait, but I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing new people and, you know, all honestly, you know, we post when we're going to be here, we have it, we follow it. If, if they want to speak, we give them the opportunity.
Mr. President, in this downtime, can we just ask if our assessor has joined the meeting?
She has. I, I do see her there.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
As well as, as well as our attorney Cottone is also, he's, he's waiting as well.
Mr. President, thank you for indulging into continuing the open forum. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Everybody all set? Nobody else came on, Lou?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Lou, do you mind documenting the time that we moved out of executive session, please? Excuse me, out of open forum, please.
Six fifty-seven.
Thank you.
This time I entertain a motion that we recess into executive session under public law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation one, Prime Healthcare Services Landmark LLC and Prime Health Services Landmark MOB LLC versus Sarah Fru in her capacity as a tax assessor of the town of North Smithfield, Rhode Island, case number PC two zero one eight dash five seven zero two. Number two, Prime Healthcare Services Landmark LLC and Prime Healthcare Services Landmark MOB LLC versus Michelle Mariani in her capacity as tax assessor of the town of North Smithfield, Rhode Island, case number PC two zero one nine one zero six six two. Number three, Prime Healthcare Services Landmark LLC and Prime Healthcare Services Landmark MOB LLC versus Michelle Mariani in her capacity as tax assessor of the town of North Smithfield, Rhode Island, case number PC two zero two zero dash zero zero eight nine five. And number four, Prime Healthcare Services LLC and Prime Healthcare Services Landmark MOB LLC versus Michelle Mariani in her capacity as tax assessor of the town of North Smithfield, Rhode Island, case number PC two zero two zero dash zero six four two eight. There are motion to recess.
So move, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Zelinski, is there a second?
Second.
By Mrs. O, Mrs. Barnioli and Mrs. O'Hara. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Muted. I can't unmute you. The bottom left-hand corner. There it is. Okay. Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. And just for all those people that are waiting, the clerk is going to put you back in the waiting room. And, and you will not be able to, obviously not be able to follow this, but you will, you will let in attorney Cottone and.
And Cynthia.
So just everyone else that's listening, you'll be put back in the waiting room and when we come out, we'll, we'll bring you back in. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Lou.
Um, there CJ got booted and he's having trouble resigning back in, so I don't know if there's going to be issues. Everybody else seems to be okay.
CJ did?
CJ.
And he's during the recording?
I am.
Oh, okay.
Everybody else is in. Ready to go when you are, sir.
All set?
Yeah.
Everybody's in?
Everybody's in?
Next item, discussion by council vote or other action on payment of bills. I entertain a motion for the following. Approval of payments for ten nineteen twenty twenty from the general fund. Four hundred and ten thousand, forty-five dollars and eleven cents from sewer and water, three hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and six and ninety-five cents for a total of seven hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents with the following department stipends of electronic payments. The library, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents. The school department, one million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. The fire department, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Monthly insurance at the interlocal trust, one hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and fourteen cents. For total electronic payments of two million, one hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-four cents for grand total payments of two million, eight hundred and eighty-eight, eight hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Zelinski, seconded by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. And a reminder that front needs to be signed?
Yes. Don't you have to make a motion to seal the minutes?
Just what I was going to ask. Well, we're into this. If we can just make this motion to.
We just, well, we just did. We did the roll call vote, so you can make that motion now, Mrs. Zelinski, if you want.
Yes, I'd like to make the, please look, the records show that in executive session that one vote was taken and to seal the minutes.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Thank you for catching that, Paul. Next item, discussion by council vote or other action on consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council is so requested, in which such event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. A town council minutes of September ninth and twenty-first and October fifth of twenty twenty. Communications Animal Control monthly report for September of twenty twenty. North Smithfield Police Department monthly report for September of twenty twenty. North Smithfield Municipal Court monthly report for September twenty twenty. Resolution from the town of Charleston regarding state assistance during the COVID nineteen emergency. Resolution from the town of Little Compton regarding state assistance during the COVID nineteen emergency. Resolution from the town of East Greenwich regarding emergency exemption computation for the maintenance of effort. Resolution from the town of Smithfield School Department to amend Article One. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that the minutes of September ninth and September twenty-first be removed. Is there anything else that would, wants to be removed from those? There are none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with those two items removed?
So move, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Zelinski, seconded by Mrs. O'Hara. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Next is discussion by council vote or other action on specific items removed from consent agenda. I had the minutes of September ninth removed in the middle of the front page on trash collection at High Rocks. It states that Mr. Vadenay stated the town is waiting for a proposed agreement to be approved for affordable housing by the planning board. This may be, but this may potentially provide for funds for trash pickup. I reviewed that video of that meeting. I never said that. Not even, so I'd asked that that be, be stricken from those minutes. And on September first, there was a motion made by Mrs. Zelinski, seconded by Mrs. O'Hara, that we moved into executive session. And after that, I know that we took a vote to seal the minutes. I know that we did. But I don't see it on here, so I'd asked that, that you go back and.
On nine twenty-one? It sure is. Now it's there. The open forum, the second motion. We got motion by Mr. Zelinski, seconded by Mrs. O'Hara and Mrs. Barnioli and voted unanimously on a roll call vote.
All right, yep, yep, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I only, I read part of it and I didn't, I didn't see it, so it's just on the night that I, that we need to make.
Okay.
A change. I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I'm in agreement with you on September ninth because I actually, I have a, I have a flag to discuss that. I don't recall you signing that, so I support that.
I didn't either, so I had to go back and watch the video to. I might have said it, but I, I'm pretty sure my argument is not going there. So I make a motion that we amend, the amend the minutes and strike that, that out of there. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zelinski and Mrs. Barnioli. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Now is there a motion to accept the minutes of September ninth and we don't need to do anything on the twenty-first as submitted?
We'll have to approve them because you amended.
First one, yeah.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Barnioli, is there a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Zelinski.
Mr. President, that was to approve the September twenty-first as, as, the September ninth as amended and also approve September twenty-first as written.
As written, correct.
Mr. President, just real quick. So on that same trash collection, the final motion, it said motion passed on a roll call vote, three to zero. Mrs. Baderomi and Mr. Vadenay voted no. Should we reflect that to say three to?
Should, should say three to two. Is that a motion to amend that?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Barnioli. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Now we'll go back and make a motion that we.
We have the motion in the second.
Ninth as amended and the twenty-first as, as submitted.
You have the motion in the second. You just have to vote.
Okay. Yeah, we have to go back because we amended it in between, so.
You vote?
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. Next item, old business, discussion by council vote or other action on update on municipal building review task force. You do have a letter from Mr. Nordstrom and he is here. The task force is recommending that invoice number one eight zero one seven dash two nine dated October sixth, twenty twenty from Secoshian Associates for services rendered through September thirtieth of twenty twenty be paid in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. There are motion to approve.
So moved.
By Mrs. Barnioli, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zelinski. Any discussion? There are none. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes. And next at the request of the town council, we draft RFQP for a police department renovation or replacement analysis has been developed. We ask your review and approval to ensure that we have captured what was expected. Mr. Nordstrom is with us. Mr. Nordstrom?
Hi, um, sure. If you have the proposal, the RFQP draft in front of you, the first page is just a cover sheet that I think goes with the advertisement. You notice there's a lot of details that have to be filled out, but that would be coordinated with the town staff as far as when and where and the time and all that. We were lucky enough that recently the town of Situate went through the same type of analysis and their RFQP was available online. So we also have an RFQP that the town is doing or has done for what to do with the Halliwell property. So between those two documents and what we had previously done. So anyways, with all that and some previous RFQs that, QPs that we put ourselves, put together ourselves, like my everything, and you have the document in front of you. Two things to note. I personally don't think it's necessary that this be limited to architects. You may have a handful of public service type of consulting firms that would be interested in doing this type of analysis that may have to hire an architect. And vice versa, you may have architects that have to hire, you know, public service type of companies to, to assist them. So it's a general RFQP asking for the analysis, for the analysis to be done. And the other item that we tried to include in there is, I know there were, have been some questions about whether or not if a new police station is recommended, whether or not it could fit on the assistance side or would have to go somewhere else. We tried to include that type of analysis, so that won't be like an outstanding question after the study is done. I think the expectation is this is a standalone study. It's not like when the work is done, you're going to be hiring the company to do additional work. So I would, I guess, for the town solicitor, just to make sure this meets the new Department of Administration, administration procurement requirements. I think it does, but just to have that check would be good. So with that, the rest of the stuff is generally just boilerplate. We, we do have to coordinate with the police department to find us, to set up tours and to find a place where all the existing documents can be looked at by any of the proposers. But aside from that, it seems to be pretty straightforward to me anyways.
Just a correction, Paul. It was, it was the town of Gloucester that we.
I keep doing that, don't I?
And not, not Situate, but it was Gloucester and it was, it was a pretty, it was a pretty thorough report too. It was, it was pretty much what we're looking to get done here.
Yeah, I don't know why I have that mental block.
Any, any questions of Mr. Nordstrom? You've all, you've all looked at it and read it and understand that what we're, it's, 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 it's the request of the council that we're, that we're going forward with. And anything that's in red would, would, has to be updated either, either through the solicitor or with the finance director because it's going out through the finance department. Mr. Ogier?
Yeah, I just, I just, I just want to make sure I understood everything correctly in it, so. I know in halfway down, it talks about the work that's already been done. But I'm assuming that's just going to be, like, I'm assuming this is a new study to determine if the renovation aspect of it, right? So that's, that's just a piece. So they're going to look at that old material and then do their own analysis and say.
Correct.
What's still applicable, what's not? Okay.
That's correct.
Um, my other, my other question centers around, um, do these RFQs, do they typically have a, when is the project going to start date? Because I know one of the things we seem to be running into a lot of times is, you know, these things, we go through this process and then we wait a couple of years to build and, you know, and maybe it's not this step, maybe it's a next step, but do inflation tables ever get put into these types of analysis? So like if a project we're going to start three years from now, you can kind of gauge what the cost would be for both options. But like I said, I don't know if that's in this, this process or if that would be after this comes through.
I think this will be after. I mean, I, I think the, the bottom line here is, you know, each of the proposers is going to have their schedule on how long it's going to take for them to complete the study. But I don't think that's what you're asking. When this is done, I believe you asked for kind of like an apples to apple comparison to help make a decision what the next step is. The next step would be if, if you decide to renovate the existing one, you still got to hire, go through that process of hiring someone and same thing if you decide to, that the ultimate decision is to build a new police station. We have to go out again with an RFQP to hire someone, get firm costs so that if you, you know, money, there'll be money, there'll be documentation to support the bond issue. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, I was just curious. So what part does that process come in and that? You answered it. Thank you.
Okay.
You have a question of the council, Mr. Nordstrom? It was your pleasure. You want to do with it?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Since, since we've been asked the question. Mr. Nordstrom, do you feel this is the right direction to go out and get this rather than just taking the three different plans that have been submitted over the years and trying to merge them all together?
Well, I, I think the comment that was raised has to be put in the proper context, okay?
Okay.
We have a meeting. We talked about what would happen if indeed we had to proceed with the existing project. How would we proceed? How would we proceed? And we felt we had enough money, I mean enough information available that we could put the, put a package together to get it out on the street. But that's only the decision to rehab and stay within the amount of money that's left over from the original bond issue. This study and this comparison is something totally different. This is presumably the, the direction, so the town council can make a decision what direction should be taken.
Thank you.
What do you want to do?
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the request for qualifications proposal for the police department renovation or replacement analysis.
Motion by Mrs. Barnioli, is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Second by Mr. Zalinski. Just, just to reiterate again, the, the front and back end of this will have to be filled out by the, by the administration, finance director and, and be reviewed by the solicitor. Um, but the body of it is pretty, is pretty self-explanatory. Whatever's in red needs to be, needs to be highlighted. Any other comments? Mr. Zazowski?
And certainly, you know, like everybody here, uh, I think we can all wish that we weren't in this circumstance. Um, and we had all the money we needed to be able to create uh, a facility that would meet the needs of the community for a long time. The, I, I think this is a, a important step and I encourage you to move forward with it. See no harm in getting the proposals. Certainly it's, is um, elementary. Um, what happens when we get the proposals in? Um, we'll see. Um, but I think um, this becomes a, an integral step to trying to make sure that we're spending taxpayer money um, on the right uh, resource. Thank you.
I think it's going to allow the town to um to draw a conclusion and, and make a move on where they're going. That's, it's going to be, it should be that conclusive that you'll make a decision. Okay, this is where we want to go and, and make a decision on where we're going. It's going to, it's going to help us draw this to a conclusion instead of continuing to debate it. Anything else? There's a motion and a second roll call vote.
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Oh, she's muted again. No, she muted herself again.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Radnay?
The chair will abstain since he helped to write the, the RFQP. Motion passes. Next up, thank you, Mr. Nordstrom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Enjoy your, the rest of your time in Maryland.
Thank you very much.
Discussion by council vote other action on trash collection at High Rocks Condominiums, one Tupper Drive. We put this on at the request of Mr. Rozier and Mr. Zalinski to review it after the discussion that we had on September ninth. I think it's an, it's important to know as we, you know, more information continues to come out on this thing that I, I did a little more homework on my own. And, and I kind of steer this toward the solicitor to, to verify this. But the council has no authority to overturn a planning board's decision in the permitting process. And that's, that's been my argument right along that we don't have the authority to change the agreement that the planning board granted to allow High Rocks to be built. And I have David to, to confirm that if you can.
Certainly the, the, the council has no authority to change that decision of the planning board as far as permitting uh, the construction of the building. That, that, that's correct, but my understanding is this is coming in as a, not a request to amend the agreement, just a request to go around the agreement and have the council exercise its legislative authority and add this to your budget. So you're correct, but I don't think the request, uh, from what I heard has been about amending the agreement. I just want to be clear, um, you, you could you grant what they have asked? Yes, but not by amending the agreement, by exercising your legislative authority and put them in your budget.
But how would we, how would we do that if, if we go in and say, okay, we're going to pay to pick up the trash when the, when the planning boards already said, we'll give you approval on this, which by the way, still, my, my argument, it still has not been finalized. There's an agreement or there's, there's an, there's a a permitting process that they went through with the planning board. The planning board said because the developer said, we will be responsible for trash pickup. I don't know how we can go in and overrule the planning board on this. Because if, if you think we can do this on this one, then, then everybody in town better get, better, better get real nervous. When the, when the town council can go in and change a planning board decision on a developer, whether he puts in granite curbs or concrete curbs, or whether they allow him to build a certain size and we can go in and overrule that? I think that we're on wrong ground there.
I, I certainly don't think it's a good, a, a good, a good um, practice, but the council, and I agree with you, the council cannot overturn the decision. That's not your authority. But my understanding is they're asking for money in your budget, like any other entity coming before the council asking for money. That, that's my understanding of the context, but I, I certainly will stand corrected on the record.
They want, they want the town to pay for trash services and that's not what was agreed, that's not what was in the, in the planning board's approval process.
I agree with that. I agree with that, Mr. President.
Mr. Rozier?
So I have a question maybe to David then, and because I'm just trying to understand the process here. So I get the precedent that's there. Could it go back to the, to the planning board to amend the permit? Or is it we way past that point in time right now and that the planning board can't revisit an old um, agreement?
It would require them to file a petition, a new petition with the planning board. Um, not, and I, I don't know what the basis of that new petition would be. Um, but I guess if they wanted to file an amendment to their, to their, the planning board's approval, they could file a request. But the problem is, the problem is that in my view, is that the planning board did not have the power to grant trash pickup because that, that's just not, that's why they made it a, I, I haven't seen this in a while, but they don't, the, the, it's just like the planning board couldn't just say, okay, we're going to waive your taxes. Uh, they, they could say, we approve your project, obviously subject to you. Um, now in this case, it was a private road and I guess there is a lot of language in your, in your town regulations that say if you're on a private road in a private condominium, that the city doesn't, the town does not provide trash pickup. So the only person that can make that policy change is the council. But the planning board was just enforcing some regulations that the council adopted. Somewhere along the line, they got the direction because they could never, um, they could never waive a cost or expense that's imposed by the town council. So we just happened to pick a long issue to have the, 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 the discussion in the context of this issue involving money. One thing is absolutely clear, the only one, only entity that controls the purse strings of the town of North Smithfield is the town council. And that's, that's the dilemma here. Can they go back before the planning board? They can, but I, the planning board could only make a recommendation to the council. They have to amend their decision and say, just like they do if somebody was going to get a zone change, they say, we approve your master plan if you can get a zone change from the council. They go to the council, the council says no, then the plan dies.
So I guess just real quick, are there any road, private roads where we currently offer trash pickup in town? It's not necessarily to you, David, it's, it's to the, to the council in town because you know, I, I get that precedent, but are there any other condominium units or anything like that in town that are on a private road or whatnot that the town's currently picking up trash?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Uh, Mr. Iglesias, may I, uh?
Yeah.
Silver, Silver Pines condominium complex, uh, the roads were built to substandard, they weren't up to the land development subdivision regulations of thirty foot wide. Granite curb, concrete sidewalk. And at first they were not receiving trash pickup or recycle. But then an active council did grant the folks living in those homes, uh, trash pickup and recycle because it was curbside. Okay, it was brought out to the road. So I think there is a precedent here to, in private development to, and we've got to be really careful. But these are owners of residential buildings. These aren't leases, they're not renters, it's not a business. Uh, these are owned apartments, uh, owned residents. So I think that's where I, it gets a little gray for me. Excuse me. And I would like to go back to, pardon me, go back to wintertime when uh, folks from High Rocks came before us and we said, we would consider it during budget. And then COVID hit us uh, with a nasty slap of unreality. And we kind of forgot these folks, so I want to go back, David, so, excuse me, Solicitor Iglesias, if you could, if we take into effect what happened at Silver Pines condominiums, which was uh, private roads and homes, residents, then we started offering them trash. And again, the, the differentiator here is it was curbside. And I have argued in the past that the pickup at uh, High Rocks is going to be actually more efficient to pull up to a dock depending on which uh, dumpster container they're using. I, we, we've heard all those arguments. So if, if we're going to go back to precedent about condominiums, uh, which I call homes, by the way. What are your thoughts, Mr. Solicitor?
Again, I, I still stand by my position that the, the, while the council can't amend the planning board decision, the council has authority to add a cost in its budget.
Yes.
But David, how do we, we can add any, anything we want to the budget, but we cannot overturn the planning board's decision. Only the zoning board of, of review and then superior court can overturn a planning board's approved. What they, they decide, we don't have the authority. And so we can put any kind of money we want in the budget, but that doesn't give us the authority to override the planning board's decision.
I, I, I understand your argument, but I, I, again, I'm just focusing on the purse strings of the council, the power of the purse.
We have control of the money. I'm not questioning that, but we cannot overturn a decision or, or what the, what the planning board went forward under the permitting process to get approval. We cannot overturn that. It would be no different than if we went back today and said to some guy that put in solar two years ago or three years ago and change and tell them, oh, no, you can't do that because we want to change X, Y, and Z. That's what we're doing in this. We're changing an approval process that we don't have the authority to do. It doesn't, we control all the money. We can put five hundred thousand dollars in the trash, but we don't have to, we do not have authority to go in and pick up the trash at High Rocks that was approved, that was not approved by the planning board. We cannot override the planning board's approval. If Smithfield Corp or whoever owns that, that, that company wants to go back to the planning board and seek some other variants, that's on them to do that. It's not for the council to overturn the planning board's approval process. That's the zoning board of review and the superior court. That's the course of action on this. It's not for us. That's what, that's my, my argument right along. We shouldn't be overturning this. It has nothing to do with us. It's not in our court. It's not in our court. We don't have any authority to overturn a planning board's decision. We have no authority on that. On that, I'm sure.
Mr. Uh, Mr. President, I see Tom Kravitz is, uh, is Tom Kravitz in the audience. Tom, would you mind if uh, he, he's not going to speak for the planning board? Because that would be a vote of the planning board, but do you mind if we hear from Mr. Kravitz on this?
Yeah, my, my thoughts, if I may, um, I've, I've thought of yet another third thing that's kind of complicating matters from my perspective that hasn't been brought up yet, and that is we have a legal record out there, right? There's a preliminary approval. The final plan approval has never been recorded. That, that final plan approval was delegated administratively, meaning to whoever the planner is at the time. So uh, you know, it, 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 a new owner has taken a new, a new property, or the, the condo association is now in play, right? So I've got to be cognizant, like David's response is right. Paul, you're right. I think David is right as well when he says the, the developer can come back and petition the planning board to, you know, massage this record that is yet to be completed, right? But it, but it's not just the developer anymore, it's the homeowners association too. So I've got to, if someone comes at me with something formal to revisit this record, I've got to be cognizant of who I'm dealing with and how you, and how I carry it forward to the board. It's just something to think about. Um, you know, but as far as the uh, trash pickup, right, that could be revisited through the planning board. Um, I've also got to deal with this project in its current form. And it's, it's not in compliance, uh, if asked to. Right, that's, see what I mean? It's not in compliance, so I've got to kind of figure that out too. So I, it's kind of in a holding pattern right now until, we don't know what the owner's going to do, right? They already went to zoning, so it's just, there's a lot going on with this. It's an interesting, it's a very interesting uh, situation, but that's all I can offer.
And that's why I made the comment a month ago or six weeks ago, whatever, that yeah, until this thing gets, comes to a conclusion, we shouldn't be playing with it. We shouldn't be playing with it. Don't mind the fact that we shouldn't be, we don't have any authority to change the, the permitting process that the planning board goes through. We have nothing to do with that.
Uh, Mr. President, if I may to, to the town planner, Tom, did the residents or representative of the residents come before the planning board seeking a letter of opinion uh, within the past year?
No, they were in attendance at some meetings. Um, they were, they were in attendance, but it was the original developer driving, you know, the, the changes to the plan that were discussed over the past year.
So the residents or representatives of the residents uh, board, they didn't come before a planning board?
They have not formally made an application to me for anything related to the record that was generated by the developer. No.
So from a planning's perspective, Tom, if uh, the folk, the, the residents came before the planning board and asked for reconsideration on this, is that something that could uh, be facilitated by the planning board to hear, hear their case?
I mean, perhaps as long as there was a, there was kind of a co uh, petition with the developer, which still has an interest in the property. I would think that that would be okay. It's got to come together and, and apply.
Uh, so uh, again, Mr. President, with your uh, to, to Mr. Iglesias, uh, David, you out there?
I'm listening, Mr. Yep.
What do you think? Is this something that uh, the town council could bring in back to the planning board so that they could take a look at this and form an opinion? Uh, with, with the myriad issues going on over there?
I, I don't think it's, I mean, you could refer it, but it's, again, I, I agree with Tom and, and, and I agree. I agree to, that it takes a petition of the applicant or a developer to get action at the planning board on the previous record. It's not that I agree with the president. I don't think the council, the, the issue of the planning board's record and permit is a planning board issue that runs in a different power, a different course of appeal. I completely agree with that. So if they want to change that record, they need to do something with it. My understanding is, was the homeowners association, who were never part of that record, have asked the town council to be added to their budget. That's my understanding and I don't see, I see that distinction as being um, the difference. The developer.
That's what I was just going to bring up.
The developer needs to go back to the planning board to seek relief of a change, an amendment. Now, if the homeowners are going to seek reconsideration with the developer, as Tom suggests, that might be a way for an application to be heard before the, before the planning board. But you know, I, I can't make that decision. We can't make that decision for the developer and the homeowners who at this point are at odds. They're at odds. I can't, I mean, I don't know if they'll, they would. They're at odds, I can't, I mean, I don't know if they'll, they would sign an application together.
Well, we don't know that, but that would be the course of action to have this move forward back to the planning board?
It'd be one way, is, it wouldn't be from the council action, it would be from the developer and/or the developer alone or the developer in constant with the homeowners, seeking an amendment to the permit and having a hearing. I still think ultimately the decision of whether or not the regulation on trash pickup, if, and I don't know if that's in the zoning ordinance or the regulations of the subdivision regulations, but that's strictly a council action. So now, the permitting, amending the permit is one issue, they might come back to you and say, yeah, we agree, subject to changing the regulations at the council. And then the regulations would have to come back to the council for consideration, if you change them, then they would amend their petition for going down that road. The regulations are always council approved, just like your ordinances, they're approved by the council. Subdivision regulations, and I just don't know where they are, whether this is in the subdivision or the zoning ordinance, I don't know which one, or probably the regulations.
The trash pickup is, is a stipulation that was put in the permitting process, it's not part of our regulation that says pick up trash on private roads, I don't think that's in there, I don't think, that's not, that's not part of the thing. This was, this was a stipulation put in place, and if you want to go back, and I didn't have the time, and I'm not going to, to be honest with you, because no one's asked me to do that. I don't know what the stipulations were put in place by the planning board when Laurel Woods was built that said, you're responsible for private trash. If that was put there and the town council stepped in and said, oh no, we'll pick up the trash, then they were wrong at that point too, then we need to stop picking up their trash as well, and if it was
I'm not advocating
Silver Pines, we need to stop picking up their trash as well, that's the whole point of this.
Well, also Silver Pines.
Done once or twice possibly, and I'm, I'm not going to, we're, we're in an area that we don't belong.
Well, I, I don't agree with that, I'm not sure
Completely controlled.
It's called constituent service, and so Silver Pines, I'm sure because it was a private development, there may or may not have been, I, I was on the board that reviewed that, I can't recall back all those years. I, I don't know that it would be all that difficult for the town planner to take a look at the stipulations or whatever is in place for the approval of Silver Pines because granite curves were given away, a lot of concessions were made over there, so it would be a quick, you know, it would be a matter of not, not a long time for the town planner or the assistant over there to take a look at that and to take Laurel Woods. We've done this before, and I'm a firm believer in constituent services, these folks are paying a tremendous amount of taxes like everybody else is in town. And if, if, I would say that if the stipulations were overridden that took place at Silver Pines and at Laurel Woods, I think the same concession should be granted to this home development, I don't want to call them condominiums, this home development. I, I think that, this is my opinion, I, I think that we should do just another visit to this and take a look at what happened at Silver Pines, what happened at Laurel Woods, because this is not a rental lease operation, this is not a business operation, and we're not opening up that can of worms, we're looking at residents that people have a mortgage on.
Cannon worms that we're opening up, I'll go back to the original, if you, if you granted, if the planning board ruled that those, any other development had to pick up their own trash, and the town council overrode and said, we'll pick up your trash, then you violated the rules, you overstepped your bounds by state law. So because we did it, we were wrong three, four, five years ago, 10 years ago, whatever, we're going to do it again, that doesn't make sense. The planning board is, is controlled by state statute, not by the town law.
And it's not.
And if a previous council overstepped their bounds then, doesn't mean we continue to do that. If anything, we go back and we revisit and say, oh, wait a minute, we were wrong then, you're on your own again.
Oh, I, I would not be
We cannot continue to violate the state law.
Go back and say, let's revisit what has happened in the past, you can't, you know, to give and then take
We're going down, we're going down the wrong road here, trying to overstep our authority as a council and get into the planning board's decisions, we're going down the wrong road, and we're going, and you do it once, and then precedent will be set. And what's to stop another town council, whether this one or next one or two years from now, going back to a decision of planning board made 10 years ago and saying, oh, by the way, we changed our mind, we're doing something different, we can't do that. And we
Mr. President
We're trying to do, and that's what we're doing right now.
Mr. Ogier, Mr. Ogier wishes to speak, Mr. President.
That's what we're, and I have the floor right now, and I've seen Mr. Ogier, and that's what we're trying to do right now, we're trying to overstep our bounds and overrule the planning board, which is set by state statute, and we don't have that authority. The solicitor has told us how to go about doing it, it needs to be the developer and the homeowners association needs to petition the, the planning board, it has
And I'm in favor of that, Mr.
We should not be taking any action on this right now, Mr. Ogier.
Well, that's why I was asking, you know, can I go back to the planning board initially, I, I believe in following precedent and, you know, following the correct processes, you know, I agree. We shouldn't be creating a mess on our hands if we don't have to. I know that this is a different situation as it is the homeowners association and the original plan was with the developer as well, and this is a totally unique situation. But I, it would be good to know if we are revisiting this at a future meeting, you know, has there been any instances when a council has overturned the planning board's decision, and that, that's something I don't know. I don't know what decisions were made at Silver Pines or Laurel Woods as well, but I agree, we, I, I don't think we should change course on anything that is being currently done now. You know, I, you know, I know that we've, we've been talking about this now, going back since, I think, February or January, and I do think we need to come to some type of resolution. It's not fair to the residents out there that have been petitioning this for so long. So, so I guess I, I'm just trying to figure out what are the next steps here, because, you know, we, as Paul originally said, we, we thought, we said that we would look at the contract for the trash pickup, and then it was the budget, which made sense, and now it's, you know, we're four months past the budget, and we know, we deferred it because we were hoping for a state aid to come in, and states still dragging their feet on everything. And COVID doesn't create any easier situation to make these decisions, but I guess I'm just trying to figure out what is the next step so that we can kind of, you know, put this behind us and move forward in, in a way that's effective for everybody involved.
The next step has nothing to do with this town council, that's what we need to understand, it has nothing to do with this town council. It's a planning board decision, that's been my argument all from the beginning of this thing. We keep going back, making, trying to make it look like it's a budget issue, it's not a budget issue. It's a boundary issue, and we're crossing the boundary when we try to get involved in this, we have no authority over the planning board. Understand, we need to understand that, we don't have any authority to overturn the planning board. If there's an issue, they go to the zoning board to review, if they don't like that issue, they can go to Superior Court, but it doesn't come back to us. We can budget all we want for it, I understand what, what the solicitor's saying. The issue is, it's not our decision to make right now, it's a planning board decision. If the planning board overturns it and says, we're going to pick up the trash, then it becomes a budget issue for us. But we're trying to rule on it out of line and out of order, it's a planning board decision. Plain and simple. Mr. Izowski.
The comments made that, you know, the, this isn't fair to the residents. The, this, this question has been asked and answered at least twice already in the budget process. And, you know, the, it keeps coming back, and even tonight, well, you know, the, Mr. President, your argument is an interesting one, the circumstance that, I believe you left this with the last time was if the budget circumstance was resolved, then, you know, we could consider it again. And, you know, the budget consider, budget circumstance is still far from resolved, based on everything I've seen, unless you folks have more information than I, you know, we're still in a precarious position as it relates to this year's budget. So, you know, here we are again, I mean, we've got a persistent request, or I, I can admire, but the answer has been given earlier this year, in January or February, when it was first brought up, and it was answered again in the budget process. And here we are a third time, okay, I guess, but folks, you said at the last time you brought this up, you would wait to see what would have happened with the budget, nothing's changed with the budget yet.
Nothing's changed. So a little clarification, Mr. Iglesias.
Yes.
As you said, it'd have to be a petition of the developer and possibly now the homeowners association. But I, I thought you made it clear that the developer would have to be part of a petition. Now, could the homeowners association come in and petition, or does it, does it, at a minimum, does the developer have to be involved in a petition? And can the homeowners join with them to do a petition to go before planning and let planning review this?
I, I really have to see what they fought, what they file, I would think if they're trying to amend an existing decision that applies to them, I just don't know, the standing is usually owner and developer is normally the standing that's required for an application. So they may be the owner of the property, but are they, the developer, the developer still exists? I, I, I'd have to see, I can't give you an, an explicit answer based upon that set of facts without seeing what, what was filed, you know, you know, homeowners association filing an application at the planning board without the owner of the property or the developer. I, I just, that just strikes me as unusual, to say the least. The owner of the property is normally mandated to be on the signature, the signature page.
So hypothetically, hypothetically, that if the owner of the property and the homeowners association came and filed a petition to be heard before the planning board for consideration of trash and recycle pickup, then the planning board would be able to review previous decisions and then opine back to the town council. Is that, is that it in a nutshell?
If the planning board were to reconsider their decision and then seek a council action on, on, you know, on this
Yeah.
Vegetarian, and in fact, there's even an ordinance, there's an ordinance section eight dash forty-four that talks about curbside pickup, which is what, I thought it was in the regulations, but it's in the ordinance. Talks about curbside pickup to residents. So that's a council action. But, you know, there's two different issues, the permit that was granted and the budget and the ordinance that's under the council's authority. So I, if you, I, I mean, I can't be given, I, I don't have the advice, I, I don't want to be here trying to give advice to homeowners association about how they should try to, try to amend this decision, I, you know. It's not, I don't think that's appropriate.
Not.
Okay, so Mr. President, at this point, after hearing argument and point and counterpoint, I do support the folks that this condominium development having their trash and recycle picked up. But I'm going to have to back away here, and I, I think it lies in their hands if they're going to petition along with the owners of the developers of the property to go before town's planning board. Again, I want to reiterate that I do support it, but that, you know, if we have to, if the planning board has to overturn a previous decision, and if that is the course of action that has to take place, then it's going, the ball is now in the court of the owners, the development of the property, the developers of the property, and the homeowners.
Mr. Baden.
Mrs. O'Hara.
You know, I think many of us feel the same about these homeowners. But at the same times, the proper steps have to be taken. If so forth at, at, at early that you had shared with us where this all began, I don't know if the developer and the homeowners did not speak about this, but we have to go through the proper channels, or else it's going to be chaotic with other applications. No one wants service not, not to be given. I don't think that, that's the big thing here, but I think proper channels have to be put forth. Just can't jump in and, because we may like it, but we have boards and regulations other places, and they have to be followed or petitions have to be put in for the, for those requirements to be changed.
Else? We have boundaries that we need to follow, that's the bottom line, and we're crossing the boundaries when we try to take over and do the planning board's job. No action necessary. New business. Discussion by council voter, other action on town ordinance section six dash three C. Historic preservation tax deferment and waiver ordinance, there's been an email, was circulated today from the solicitor to the rest of the council. And with that, with that said, just bear with me, and we'll go through this. First item is a public hearing, and so I'd entertain a motion that we open a public hearing. Motion by Mr. Ogier, second by Mrs. Barneoli. Before we even take questions though, I'm only opening it up as a formality because it's on the agenda, I'm going to ask that we continue it to November second at this time, I'm not going to take any comments tonight on it, I'm just going to ask that we, we opened it and that we're going to continue it to November second, and we'll explain under the next piece.
Mr. President, you're going to call the vote, though, we had a motion in a second, call the vote. Yes.
Well, we, oh, I'm sorry. Well, no, we're in, we're in discussion under that, yes.
Well, we had a motion in the
We opened a public hearing, and, and I'm recommending that we continue it to November second.
So are you looking for a motion to continue it to November second, or are you just?
No, I think, I think we need a motion to, call, we have a motion in a second.
We have a motion, I'm, I'm asking you to take the vote, Mr. President.
Yeah, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barneoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes. The public hearing is open, but at this time, I don't want to take public comment, I want to continue it to November second. The documents that we have and the documents that people would be referencing are not, are not complete or accurate on what we need. The recommendation of the solicitor. So I'm recommending that we take the public hearing and continue it to November second, when we have the proper documents in front of us, it's not proper before us right now.
So moved on that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Barneoli, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara, any other discussion?
Yes, I just want to make sure, Solicitor Iglesias, is this the right path to follow procedure?
It is, Mr. Vice President, the president taking the lead on that, there needs to be some adjustments made to the documents before you, before you should consider them.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question, so are we talking about working within the current, because one, there was two options, if I remember the document correctly, right, Mr. Solicitor Iglesias? There was the one that conformed it to the current state law, which capped the credit, and then there was another one that could have enabled us to seek state enabling legislation based on the current ordinance in front of us. I'm just trying to make sure, I'm trying to understand where the nonconformity comes in going forward, just so, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly.
Well, I, my understanding, it was the intention of the historic district commission to pass the ordinance, the proposed ordinance that's before you, but based upon some email that I've seen, they, they've indicated that they might want to do both. Not to wait for the legislature to act on enabling legislation, but may want to take action on the 20% credit in the near future, and then seek to revise it for the full deferment and waiver later on. That's the impression I got from one of the members.
Thank you for clarifying, no, thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barneoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes. And the next item is discussion by council voter, other action on a second reading. And for those reasons that the solicitor just stated, I'd look for a motion to table this until November second, until it can be brought into what we're actually looking for it to do.
So, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zalinski, is there a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Barneoli, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barneoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes. Mr. Iglesias, you'll work on bringing this into compliance for.
I will, Mr. President. I'll do two things. One, I'll prepare one that meets the state 20% cap. And I'll also potentially have a resolution after talking to some of the members if you want to consider the other option. I'll do both.
Yeah, either way, we have to do it. It just I I don't know if we have to start over. I think if we go with enabling legislation, the first reading becomes a moot point. If we if we go if we go with rewriting the ordinance to reflect the state law, current state law, then we'll be it'll be a second reading and we can actually pass it and begin to implement it.
I think that's right. I can submit a substitute A.
Okay. Next item, discussion by council voter other action on reservation request for DPW fuel dispensing system, Mr. Jesus.
Hi, yes, I'm requesting to move funds in the amount of 5,500 from the demolition of the stamina bill office building to the DPW fuel dispensing system.
Mr. President.
Mr. Izowski.
My newsletter last week touched on this. It is, as we know, we twice have tried to get that building demolished and we didn't have enough money. The issue of asbestos crept in and and made our budget woefully inadequate. In the intervening months, what I have done is pursued both Rhode Island DEM and EPA to take care of this building on their own. And we have made progress in that way. I have met with a EPA rep and a and their contractor. They are, they've received permission from Washington to use funds to be able to demolish the building. There is a caveat or a catch in the the issue again, unfortunately. That is that there's a requirement by EPA or a need by EPA to get approval from the state historic preservation officer here in Rhode Island. Those discussions started last week. I am still optimistic that it it will happen. There is a an interim step that EPA will be, I believe, is going up or has already requested bids for to go through a a prescribed, a highly scripted documentation of the building, how it's built, the dimensions, photographs and the like before it can be taken down. And thereafter, they would go forward, assuming that the state historic preservation officer approves. I have been aware for months that this was a possibility. Oh, we we about a month ago went forward with authorization to upgrade the fuel supply facility at the DPW, the fueling station at the DPW. And I indicated then that we were close with funds. It's a $75,000 expenditure. We need to to move these funds. I'm hoping I'm driving us toward a circumstance where all of the money that we had budgeted for the demolition of the office building will be available to us. This is the first step and I encourage your your passage. Thank you.
For the recommendation of the finance director administrator, it was your pleasure.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zalinski that we transfer $5,500 from the town council reserve demolition stamina office building and moving into the DPW fueling dispensing system account.
Mr. President, I made that motion on the information that was provided this evening by town administrator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Barneoli and Mrs. O'Hara. Any other discussion?
Yeah, if if the town clerk could kind of weave that in there that because of the information provided this evening, that that's why I made that motion.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barneoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes. Next item, discussion by council voter other action on contract between the town of North Smithfield and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Rhode Island for North Smithfield Fire and Rescue Services, Mr. Izowski.
Mr. President, members of the council, we have this document. It's it's nothing that we can modify. It's something that I frankly considered signing on my own, but recognize I do have limits that way as the administrator. This is, this will allow the North Smithfield Fire and Rescue Service to go forward with a a Blue Cross health plan that is based upon a health savings account. It is a first time for them and in fact is the first time on the municipal side of government, although they're not the municipal side of government. We fund them from this side. That this type of program is to take place. I am very, very happy to see that the chief and the board were able to negotiate that element into their agreement with their labor group. I commend them all for recognizing that this is a a win-win circumstance for the labor group and for the fire department. And I ask your authority to be able to sign it so that because their their entire program is managed through our Blue Cross relationship. It's a town that has to sign the agreement.
For the recommendation of the administrator to authorize him to sign the ancillary administrative service contract of Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Rhode Island, their motion to authorize him to sign. Motion by Mrs. Zalinski, seconded by all. Gary, just so that we're we're clear on this. We technically don't pay for their health insurance. We're not their employers. But because it runs through the town's plan, we need to sign off on it.
That's correct. The Blue Cross practice and the trust is, well, this is Blue Cross, excuse me, requires that it be with the parent organization, if you will.
So everyone's clear. They're not they're not our employees, but they're on the town's plan, just so we're clear. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barneoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes. Next item, discussion by council voter other action on the purchase of a mobile vehicle lift for DPW, Mr. Jesus.
This came from the recommendation of the DPW director. Um, it's for a mobile vehicle lift. And it was taken from the Rhode Island master price agreement, but he did get three quotes, except actually one of them wasn't able to quote. There was three vendors on the MPA. One of them cannot quote the lifts under 16,000 pounds. So you got two quotes. He's recommending to move to purchase the mobile vehicle lift from Vehicle Service Group Sourcewell for the amount of $9,486.41. The cost will be funded by the 2018 capital reserve account for the girls softball field irrigation system at Pacheco Park.
For the recommendation, the finance director, their motion to approve.
A move, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zalinski, is there a second? Second by Mrs. O'Hara on the discussion, Mr. Pendergast.
Yes, I'm here.
Hello, Ray. Can you give us a little more detail on this?
Absolutely. We have yearly inspections of the two lifts in the in the mechanic's garage. And back in August, we had an independent inspection done on the two lifts. The larger lift passed, but the two post 12,000 pound lift failed. That was installed in 2004. At that point, I asked for the written court to repair the lift and it was approximately $8,000. I then explored the master price agreements to purchase a new one. And as the finance director indicated, the lowest quote that I could get was $9,486. And that's basically where we're at. This lift is is mainly used for the servicing of the the police fleet and smaller trucks and cars in in our fleet. The larger lifts obviously take care of the larger trucks.
Right. We're taking the funding from capital reserve account in 2018. Was this surplus money or was it money that just was not spent?
It was money. Go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, we just haven't got to to spend it yet. And when I was going through some of the reserve money that we have, is obviously is a more important issue than irrigating the field at this time. So I I will definitely look to pick that up somewhere else in another budget cycle.
Well, it may be more important. My concern is that it's been sitting there for two years or almost three years and we haven't and we didn't do anything. If there was a need, if we had three years ago, why didn't we do it three years ago? And now it's lucky that we have the funds so we can we can transfer it like that. But if we're asking for things in capital budgets and then they sit there for three years and we don't accomplish them or we don't go forward with them, why did we ask for them in the first place? That's 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 my main concern. Is that if this was something that everyone deemed was necessary when we did the capital budget three years ago and now it hasn't been done yet. Hasn't been done, you know, it's kind of a rhetorical question. I don't necessarily need an answer for it, but we the the funds are there only because we we didn't spend them on what we asked them to be spent for three years ago. I I take a little bit of an issue with that.
And I and I think that whatever quote we got from a certain company in town for that quote was not enough to if we had gone out to bid and actually if we had moved forward with that project, I don't believe you would have had enough funds with the 12,000 that was originally planned.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barneoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes. Ray, our guys are going to have to dismantle that and then the new the the other company will put the new one up.
Yes, good question. We have to disassemble it and there's going to be some upgrading of electrical and possible concrete work. So I think we'll with the extra, I believe it was 15,000, $594 off that 11,000. We'll probably go towards that and hopefully that hopefully we won't even use that, but we'll take care of it from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Next up, discussion by council voter other action on amendments, Mr. Jesus.
This is a recommendation from the tax assessor. She's recommending a total abatement of $13,641.3.
Okay, let's do that one first because they're two separate actions. You've heard the recommendation of the finance director and the tax assessor for abatements totaling $13,641.3. Their motion to approve. Somebody?
Don't move.
Motion by Mrs. Barneoli, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
O'Hara.
Yeah, I have this I have discussion too.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Ogier, you can go first.
Yeah, I was just, well, mine's just real quick. I was curious as to the 8,000 for the tangible tax for tangibles included in Stop and Shop for P Pod. Seems like a high number. So I was just kind of curious as to I can get some insight to that.
Well, what Michelle explained to me is that the tangibles were already included in the Stop and Shop account number 19108120. So it was kind of duplicate invoice.
Their P their their P Pod has its own, it's like its own vision.
It used to be, yes, it was exactly. They had them separate and then I don't know if she did it or somebody did it, but she put it into the Stop and Shop. So she caught it during her whatever she reconciles and it was getting double billed.
Okay.
P Pod and Stop and Shop, yes.
Okay.
So you can't fill both for the same things.
Why not? Those of you out there in Zoom land, that was a poor attempt at humor. Oh, I'll go with it, Paul.
What's that, the poor attempt at humor?
Yeah. Oh, I oh, I could not. I'm going to stop.
Yeah, no, we we you're right.
Yeah. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barneoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes. The other half, Mr. Jesus.
The other half is supplemental bills for either new constructions or this missing forklift at the Toyota location. And it totals $85,388.15.
For the finance director and the tax assessor for supplemental billing of $85,388.15, their motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Barneoli, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Non-roll call vote.
Mrs. Barneoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes. Their motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Barneoli, second by Mrs. O'Hara, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barneoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes. Thank you all.
Please don't forget to come in.
Don't forget to go sign the bill payment.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.